Three city commission meeting to order, please call the rule.
Mayor Hattasol.
Here.
Commissioner Butler.
Here.
Commissioner Mata.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Present.
We have quorum.
All right, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move right into the work session item, which is reviewing and discussing the City of Manhattan's five-year strategic plan progress and the 2024 general fund budget. Jared.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you. I'm going to be kind of guiding the presentation tonight. I'll be covering some of our strategic plan action items, but I'll also be kind of handing off the presentation here and there to our department heads so that they can give you an opportunity to touch on any strategic action items that specifically relate to their department, as well as give any kind of brief overview about their budget and any maybe significant changes to their budget for the 2024 budget year. If you have questions related to the action items, while a department head is speaking, you know, go ahead and chime in with them to ask any questions or clarification you're looking for there. At the end of the PowerPoint, we're also going to have just a general fund overview and discussion. So if there's a specific detail that you're really wanting to dive into the general fund budget, we can do that at the end. We adopted our strategic plan near the tail end of 2021. So we've really are about 18 months through our first ever five-year strategic plan. We've been beginning the process of tracking our action items, as well as looking into how we can institutionalize the plan across the organization within our operations and how we budget. If you recall, this is a chart we've brought up to you multiple times, specifically during the city commissioner retreat, of how we're looking to institutionalize the strategic plan, get the actions in front of you to provide you progress and get you feedback on those action items. We're usually at the end of the year, starting with the department head retreats, so we can plan the future years' implementation of the strategic plan. And then we provide that information to you at a retreat with you in January. And then we dive into developing the budgets for the next year, developing our capital improvement plan, and eventually adopting our budget here in September. I'll touch on this during Goal Two when I cover that slide, but we are looking to begin to track progress visually for the public, for you all, updating our monthly report to have it focused on action items of the strategic plan. And you all saw this slide during your city commissioner retreat, but it's a step we're taking to start tracking the progress of action items. If you recall, we had 47 action items across five goals within the strategic plan. As of January 1, we had kind of analyzed that three of those actions were substantially complete. We had 21 of those actions that were in progress in various stages. And six of those actions, we consider kind of ongoing and they're never going to be complete, but we're going to continue to make progress toward them during the five-year period and track progress and update you and the public on how those are going. We had our first goal as a well-run city organization. Key objectives in that were modernization of our organization, increasing our, bolstering our recruitment and retention efforts, and making sure our fiscal health of the organization was healthy, as we are responsible for so many public funds and the use of those funds. We have a lot of improvements that we are tracking over the next five years as it relates to that first action of the strategic plan, which is modernizing technology, softwares and systems. I'm going to talk here later about the IT strategic plan that we've been working towards to be a more modern organization, to have better access to information and systems for you, for our members of the public, and the way that they do business and interact with us. One of the big things that we've been working on, and Rena is going to touch on here, is the RFP that we've done to replace our antiquated AS400 system. We're narrowing down the responses, but it's going to be a huge effort that's going to take a lot of the organization's time and finances time here in 2024. So Rena, do you have any thoughts there? And Rena, also mention any updates to your 2024 budget.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. So the last time I was before you was in April of 2022 with GFOA, and we provided an update about the process that they use to move forward with an ERP solution. We went out in the fall and October of 2002 with an RFP. We received two responses back. We did do demos of those responses in January, at the end of January and beginning of February. After talking with GFOA as well as management, we decided to go back out. The original RFP had the financial package as well as asset management. And we believe, including the asset management, limited the amount of responses that we received. So we did go back out in April of 2023, excuse me, May of 2023 with the new RFP, and we received seven responses. We had four demos for two weeks in July. And so we have narrowed down those four demos to two. And we will have additional discovery and clarification phases with those two particular vendors. And then hopefully in the fall of this year, we will have a solution and begin the negotiation process, as well as a contract for review by legal as well as the city commission. After that, we will then go out for RFPs for utility billing and then community development licensing and permits. And that includes not only community development, but also risk reduction, fire, as well as customer service, and any other department that may have a need for licensing and permits. Sometimes Public Works has those as well. And then the last one we will do is asset management. This is a process that involves the entire organization. With those demos, we had about 15 to 20 staff members participate over eight days with GFOA and attendance as well, and then those vendors coming in. And so that is where we are with that process. We do have $4.2 million of ARPA funds allocated. We presented that a few weeks ago in one of our budget updates set aside for that. And not for certain if that will cover all of those four modules, but we will be back before you with an updated budget as we continue to go through each phase.
And the plan will be that although even while they may be different, they'll all fall under a umbrella that works together, talks together, functions together.
Yes, that's our goal, is to have a solution that will provide for the integration of those other three modules that either are best of breed or the next best solution.
Why was asset management the deal breaker? That's inventory, right?
So besides inventory, it's also our capital assets in terms of furnishings, plant, equipment, property, but also is the maintenance of those particular assets as well. And finding a solution that has an asset management component included, that's not something that a lot of the financial packages have, like similar to utility billing, community development, and permits, asset management. They are, they have best-of-breed solutions out there. There are software providers that do have everything integrated, but then you do have some shortcomings in terms of whether or not it does provide all of the requirements that staff is looking for.
All righty.
Before I move on, I do want to commend Rena, Rebecca, Lindsay, and our finance department staff on just the work they've done upfront to get us working with GFOA to a point where we do have two ERP solutions that we're trying to finalize. And then, like we said, next year, implementing such solution is going to be, you know, a big, major toll on the whole organization. One of our vendors likened it to replacing your car's engine, but you got to keep the car running the entire time. So it's going to be quite a process that our staff's going to be working on over the next few years, really. Another modernization of technology that we wanted to talk about was our municipal court case management system. So Katie Jackson, our city attorney, was going to talk a little bit about that and any legal department budget updates.
This year, we had to do an update to the case management system, which organizes all the records and corresponds everything we have to send to the state and to the federal systems. That's something that we've already implemented. We did about a week of training and it's going well. The note for the commission and the public is we're able to incorporate a module where the public will be able to access court documents for the first time. So for their own case, including like when their hearings are scheduled and other things that now they have to call the court for. And so when that's ready to go, we are going to put out information on that so that people know they can get that online. And other than that, our budget for '24 is just to support all the other many things that you're seeing tonight and all the things the city will do.
Yep, all of these bullet points that you're going to see here, we'll have departments talking about it, our city manager's office talking about it, but our city attorney's office, our finance department, human resources are always there behind us, assisting us, and we wouldn't be able to accomplish any of these action items without them. So their support, those administrative departments are vital to the health of having that well-run organization. When we were doing our organization excellence initiative quite a few years ago, actually, and we were focusing on, you know, being an employer of choice and making improvements for our employees, a thing that came up was workplace environment all the time. And our facilities was a big thing that continuously came up across multiple departments, along with the equipment that our employees are using to do their job and pursue the mission for the city of Manhattan. So a lot of bullet points here that we've made a lot of progress on that we're real proud of. The first one is quite a few things that the Manhattan Fire Department are doing as it relates to upgrades at headquarters, their training site, as well as a potential sick station. So Scott.
Good evening. I don't have a lot of updates for you, but as of August 10, we'll be doing a replat of the new training ground that we purchased. That was the last time I was in front of you was requesting the purchase of that land behind Station 3. And so it'll go before the planning board on the 10th for the rezoning. We're still in the process of working on a scope of work to create a document for a training ground master plan so that we can provide you with some costs and what the expectation is to get that facility up and running. And we are currently doing a Phase 1 environmental review of our current training ground. That's part of the negotiation we're having with K-State and to renew that lease as they want us to do an environmental study with the PFAS foam issues that have hit the news lately with firefighting foam. Obviously, that's an area that we have done some training with that foam. And so I think that's probably a good idea to at least do the Phase 1 analysis to see if there are any contaminants from that foam on that ground. That's really where we're at at this point. You have any questions for me?
All right. The joint maintenance facility, the OT, opened March of 2023. Just a great facility for our employees. Most of them have transitioned into operations out of there. So it's another just new area that our employees are really proud to work out of as they represent the city. Our vehicle and equipment replacement fund, the VERF. If you recall, last year, we used some of our ARPA funds to increase that capital fund so we could, as seed money, to start replacing some of our outdated vehicles and equipment. We were struggling, you know, over, you know, the past many years to find money to fund those. It was hard for those to compete with other capital improvement CIP projects. So that seed money was a great start. Now we do have departments, and you'll see that line item throughout their budgets, where they're paying into the vehicle and equipment replacement fund annually so that we can build up funds over 10 years or 15 years, whatever the life cycle of a vehicle or a piece of equipment is, so we can have the funds readily available to make those vehicle and equipment replacements so that they're not competing with other projects. Alfonso was recently in front of you too, related to the cemetery master plan. That's just another facility that we are trying to, you know, increase and update, make improvements for our employees. So he'll be back, and he's been going around with some boards and committees to get further feedback and further feedback from the community and should have an update here soon as they work through that. I do want to introduce you to another new project that we're doing, which is upgrades to City Hall that we're planning for. We've engaged in a feasibility study with Bruce McMillan and his team. We haven't really done any upgrades to the old portion of City Hall since the late 1990s. Carpet replacement, cubicle replacement is one thing that, again, has been very hard to compete with, with other CIP projects. So we're getting some analysis on how we can make upgrades to City Hall in the older edition of the first floor, as well as the entire second floor. Some of you have been up to City Hall in those meetings, and you got to maneuver over carpet that's got waves in it and some craters. And so we're trying to upgrade those facilities for our employees. We are also kind of running out of space within City Hall in certain areas. Divisions and departments are shifting around. So with that project, we're also trying to identify some areas where we can add more office space because the cubicle layout that we have right now is a model that is discontinued. We can't add any more walls or update any of our cubicles. So that's something that we're going to be coming back with you this fall to give you an update and an analysis on that feasibility study and the possible cost to do some upgrades at City Hall. Evaluation of our current and future structure of our organization, that's another modernization area from a human capital standpoint of how do we best position our employees, put them in the right departments, put them with, under the right leadership so that they can serve the community in the best possible ways. Some of the things that we've been doing have related to shifting building services from the Parks and Rec Division into the city manager's office to have a more centralized organizational focus, as well as, you're all familiar with the conversations we've been having with the animal shelter. Wyatt Thompson, our assistant city manager, is now overseeing both of those divisions. So he'll talk a little bit about that.
Good evening, commissioners. Building Services Division are some of the unsung heroes of the organization, making sure that a lot of our city facilities are ready to open each day and are clean and well-kept and prepped and ready to go for the public. They provide building maintenance and custodial services for a variety of city facilities, including City Hall, Municipal Court, the Joint Maintenance Facility, and a variety of Parks and Rec facilities. And so part of the intent of centralizing them in the city manager's office was because they do touch so many different departments and different facilities across the city. We're able to have a bit broader view in our office than where they were previously in Parks and Recreation. And so part of our analysis the rest of this year and into '24 will be an internal strategic plan for that division, looking at how they can better serve the entire city and expand their role perhaps. We have a variety of ways that we manage custodial services and building maintenance across the city. It's not all within Building Services Division. And so we want to look at how they can play a bigger role. We want to look at how we can identify cost savings, either from staffing efficiencies or time efficiencies or purchases and the way we handle purchasing agreements for different products and services that we utilize in the building maintenance area. So those are things we'll be looking at internally. And the budget for 2024 is similar to last year. And the Building Services budget also contributes to other budgets within departments so that we can track those costs as they relate to specific facilities. So not everything that they spend is in their budget, but they do touch a number of other throughout the city as well. In terms of the animal shelter, you know, you recall back in January, we presented a number of operational challenges that we've had over many years at the animal shelter and with staff retention, with just the issues that come with animals in the public and our staff all interacting and trying to provide a great service to the community comes with challenges. And so we've been, we started negotiating with Prairie Paws Animal Shelter after your concurrence last week to begin those discussions. And so we intend to bring back their proposal and contract for you to sign later this fall or for you to review and consider later this fall. Their 2024 budget for the animal shelter reflects as if the city were to continue operating the shelter as well as animal control services. And we, our intent would be to continue operating animal control within the city. And we intend to update the budget in 2025 to reflect the costs associated with the contractual arrangement that we would hope to continue with Prairie Paws. So the 2024 budget won't exactly show that, but we'll be able to provide and track those, that data throughout 2024 to reflect those true costs to you as we consider continuing that arrangement in future years.
And the last piece that we wanted to talk about from an organizational structure standpoint is a kind of an upgrade to having an IT department and a department head serving the organization. When I started with the city, IT was an information systems division that was within the finance department. A few years ago, right around COVID, we transitioned IT out of finance into the city manager's office as a division to, again, give them a more central role within the organization, more, you know, a seat at the table as it comes to all of our facility upgrades and the future of technology purchases and investments. You'll notice that the IT budget, last year, we created the IT fund, which is much like the vehicle and equipment replacement fund, where departments are paying a fee into that fund to fund not only the staff of the IT department, but any software and equipment upgrades and replacements over time. The IT department had a, from a budget, when you look at it from 2023 to 2024, there was a big jump in the number in the budget, a couple million dollars. A lot of that is just taking money from the general fund and other departments and then putting it into the IT fund. So we're really just moving money around. The net increase within the IT budget is actually only about $400, $500,000 in the general fund, $700,000 overall. A lot of, this was the first year that we've shifted software into the IT fund from a consolidated standpoint. So that's where you're seeing the big increase. Another thing that we're doing with the IT department, there's some staff increases that are proposed for 2024. We need an individual to manage this new ERP and database system. So we're looking to hire an ERP manager. We are also shifting GIS from Public Works to the IT department. So the IT director would oversee GIS. That is another resource and staff that all of our departments are looking to for assistance and work in the GIS area. So centralizing that is another step, as well as staff to assist with management of our asset management system. And asset management, as we were talking about, is not only the inventory and lifecycle costs of all the assets that we have, but it'll also include GIS databases of all of those assets and any work order systems to continue to maintain those. Couple of things that we'll talk a little bit later during the general fund budget, but maintaining adequate fund balances. Prior to 2022, we were well below the GFOA recommendation of a general fund cash balance. Through department savings and other steps, we've been able to bolster that cash balance well over kind of the $9 to $10 million GFOA recommendation. So we do have a healthy cash balance coming into '24. We are looking to utilize some of that money to make transfers into the capital improvement fund so we can do those capital projects. That's where that funding source is going to come from. And then we're looking to explore always additional sources of revenue. We've been in front of you a few times with some workshops on fees. And we're going to continue to do that over the course of 2023 and 2024 to look at updating some of those fees. The Parks and Rec Foundation, that private group that's looking to raise money for our Parks and Rec department is another thing that'll help operations potentially. Goal Two is a connected government, so we're trying to inform our community as best we can so that they have the right information to understand what we're doing and how we're moving the community forward and implementing our strategic plan. How do we engage with them and connect with them? A few things on the horizon. We mentioned the increase in access to municipal court case information with some of those software upgrades. Within our CIP, we do have slated a website overhaul for not only our City of MHK site, but all of our ancillary sites in 2025. That's going to be a big project as well. We're wanting to wait until our ERP system is a little bit farther along, so that'll tie into it. And then any upgrades that we have with permitting, licensing, and so forth can upgrade there. That one is long overdue. We haven't touched our website in over 10 years at 2025. So it'll be, definitely be a time and an overhaul there. We are working on launching a new strategic plan dashboard and updating our monthly report so we can track data in a more efficient way, have easier access to that data for not only our departments, but the public, and then, again, be more intentional in how we promote what's going on within the city. It's taken a lot longer than we thought. Myself, Kristin, and Andrew Lawson, our PIO, have been working on that. We're combining over 600 data measures that our departments are tracking and putting them into this system, as well as trying to continue to track all 47 of those initiatives. But it's important to do that, and so we're just making sure that we're, we have everything in the right order so we can launch that effectively. And I don't even want to talk about a review of board bylaws and ordinances since we've been doing that so much. So I'm just going to skip over that. Goal Three is a big one. Mobility, infrastructure, resiliency are those key objectives. That first one about funding the city's bicycle and pedestrian systems plan is a huge undertaking. If you recall, in 2019, we adopted that 20-year plan. Have a lot of safe routes to school projects still in the queue, multiple phases there. A lot of great projects from a bike ped standpoint that are in the queue as well. Upgrades to, we're working to get that sidewalk all along Hayes Drive connecting McCall encasement. Y'all just approved the North Manhattan Avenue project north of Aggieville that's going to have that two-way cycle track, as well as pedestrian upgrades there. We're looking at a large portion of Anderson Avenue, and then we have the project along Fort Riley Boulevard to finish that connection for pedestrians there. The airport has been pretty popular, so I'm going to deflect all that to Brandon.
Yeah, we're so popular, we have our own action item. And the strategic plan that's listed out there is obviously implementing the airport master plan. And the master plan's main focus is the infrastructure at the airport. And it kind of sets us up for doing these really large projects, but also opens the door for us to get some significant grants. And so obviously, right now, as you guys are all well aware, we're working towards that reconstruction of runway 321. Target date is the early September 1st. That's when the contract ends. American Airlines has just recently announced that they finalized their September schedule, and they're coming back on September 6. The contractor, Clarkson Construction, is pushing really, really hard to try to hit that date. They have run into a few snags, which has caused a little bit of delays. The Crosswind Runway, I'm hoping that the storm that hits tonight isn't too severe, and they're able to continue to make some progress on the electrical work and get that Crosswind open here within the next few days. With that runway 321 reconstruct, as I mentioned, the grants, just wanted to remind everybody that we've got $24,479 from the FAA paying for that and up to $5.9 million for a DCIP grant covering that cost, which brought the local share, which you all are aware, down to about $3 million. It's the largest grant that we've ever got. Once we finish that project in 2024, I'm looking at building some additional hangars, a two-bay big box hangar over by the big stone hangar, and then adding six box hangars next to our hangar row. That project's going to be around $2.2 to $2.3 million. I'm able to, I was able, I'm able to go after a bipartisan infrastructure grant that's going to end up covering 90% of that cost. So hopefully, at the end of this year, depending on what happens in Washington, if they pass appropriations bill and they don't operate on continued resolutions, I hope to be in front of you guys presenting the finalized design and then with a grant offer from the FAA for those funds to get that project off the ground and construction to start in '24 with the completion in the fall of '24. in the fall of 24. Those additional hangars will also help me increase some of my revenues. That's one thing that we haven't been able to do is build new hangars in quite a long time. And so this grant has kind of opened that up for that. So stand for any questions?
So if we so if we get the grants from the feds, we get to keep any rent money that we?
Yeah, absolutely. So the designated rent will hopefully offset the local share for that cost, that 10%.
All right.
That's my intention. It's filling those hangars and utilizing that to pay for our to pay for our costs.
Getting these extra hangars is a big deal. Ever since I've been in office, which is eight years, I've had people approach me saying, why doesn't the city build more hangars? That we're having to go to Clay Center and other airports for our for our private planes. And so having this opportunity to get grant money is just the perfect solution.
Yeah, the biggest challenge with us being able to add hangars has just been the cost.
Yeah.
And what we charge for rent or what the the fair market value is for those is wouldn't be able to the rent wouldn't be able to offside the debt service. So when that bipartisan bill passed, it opened up this funding source that we weren't eligible for under traditional AIP funding because we're too large and we can't build revenue generating facilities under that program. The bill money came in, that opened that up. We applied for it. We were successful. And hoping to get that once Washington gets things figured out.
Good news.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I know Brandon thinks he's special because he has just one action item related to the Manhattan Regional Airport. But goal three is basically the public works show. We're not going to focus too much on water and wastewater and because we have a utilities work session here in a couple of weeks, but Rob's going to give a little update on some of these action items.
Well, getting Commissioners Rob Ot, Director of Public Works, son, continue to maintain city streets. I think I gave you guys a pretty thorough presentation on pavement management throughout the community. If there's specific questions, I can certainly get into various projects, but we've met goals for the last six years in terms of contractor spending for the sales tax for street maintenance as well as using special street and highway dollars, which is the gas tax. We have, you know, certainly tried to take a holistic approach to not just the pavement, but also are there things underneath the pavement that need to be addressed, whether it's sewer lines, water lines? You've seen us do that in the North Campus Corridor as well as Aggieville. So with that, I don't want to belabor what I presented a couple of months ago, but if there's any specific questions on city streets, I'll certainly answer more. I can jump into the stormwater side. Questions?
I just was going to ask about alleys. Our goal was to do an alley a year or two alleys a year.
Yeah, we.
Have we slowed down on that or?
But we've been struggling with getting those benefit districts created, honestly. Also, just prices and finding contractors that want to do that size of work. So to be honest with you, no, we're we're not meeting, I guess, that holistic goal that we had talked about years ago. It's been difficult, again, to get those benefit districts formed. And frankly, prices just continue to play havoc in those in those alleys and find contractors that even want to do that size of work.
Misses, we did bid one this year. Yeah, so we had one design. It wasn't like we weren't trying.
Yeah.
It came in way over the petition amounts and there hasn't been a desire by those petitioners to sign a new a new balance.
Can we include that in the development? When somebody when a developer comes in and wants to do a whole, you know, their side of the alley, a half, a whole block for apartments or why can't we, just like we do with, you know, streets that they're part of the solution with partners with the city in funding those?
We we have been successful on a couple of those in the past when it is the entire block.
Yeah.
It's it's when it's not the entire block that it makes it very difficult.
I know it is.
But we've had, I think, I can think of one for sure off of the Bluemont Hotel. I want to say there was a second one as well.
The other issue we have is the whether or not that development is going to use the alley for access. If they're not going to use the alley for access, then the other folks that are using the alley should be paying more for it too. So it just try to find that balance in fairness as to how that works is.
My my observation is that some of them purposely do a design so that they aren't accessing the alley for for their parking. So anyway, it's just it's a game sometimes. It just really is. But I, you know, we require participation when the developer comes in to build a new subdivision, a new street, they have to participate in the utilities and and just because this is an old neighborhood. But I do think, one to our credit, we have, I think, addressed some of the worst alleys. If if there's a way to say it, that's positive. So thanks.
And and if you remember right, we certainly look at some of the criteria we had was the density, you know, per block and just, you know, trying to have some objective criteria too. There certainly are some gravel alleys that don't have that high intense use. They don't have high dwelling numbers per block. So it doesn't make sense. They, you know, a little bit of blading once or twice a year are okay. Obviously rainfall events. Brandon's jinxing us for tonight, but rainfall events certainly affect that. And of course, it's move in time for the students, so.
Well, I know that we targeted the east east side of North Manhattan Avenue and we are allowing high-rise apartments there. And along with that comes some responsibility. So I just think that if we're forward thinking, we don't have to inconvenience our citizens with some of those alleys that take you hills and valleys. Thanks. That's all.
Want me to keep going on storm? So before I jump into stormwater, again, since this is goal three, which is infrastructure, between not only what Brandon's doing as well as public works, we're somewhere between 80 to 100 million in, you know, active construction projects ongoing right now. Obviously, the levy is is a very large project where there is substantial federal funds that are that are infused into that project. But still managing that sheer amount of value is definitely stressful for all of us, but it's it's not just me, it's Brandon as well and taking on those sorts of projects with our staff. I mentioned levy construction, you know, we're still probably at least two years away. Hayes and Casement is on track for October. And, you know, that's an improvement that protects roughly a billion dollars in property value. And that's that's probably an old value of what the levy protects downtown. If you think about it, if the levy were to fail under the right scenario or the right flood event, we're talking about water basically from 14th Street all the way to the the Big Blue River. You have obviously the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant. Significant sales tax revenue is generated, which is very much our lifeline. So that's why that project is so important, not only to just those even in the area that would be inundated, but also those on the west side of town that would be out of water in six to 12 hours, depending upon whether it's winter time or summertime, as well as our our other providers that we deliver water and sanitary sewer service as well. August 22nd, you are going to have, I guess, public works night. And we'll be talking about rates for water, wastewater, stormwater. You're also going to have Bill Heather, Dr. Bill Heatherman, our stormwater manager that'll be speaking as well on three different topics on stormwater. So we continue to try and address flooding, not only with projects, but also with policy and design. The other thing too that we picked up this year was the floodplain management, transitioning from community development to public works. And that's ongoing and is tedious because we do have a, I believe, a five-year evaluation coming up for flood insurance. So it's important to make sure we have all those documents. And I know we've completed some buyouts and I believe we even have one on the agenda coming up in a month or so as well for you all to consider. So with that, I can get into specifics if you have more questions.
Don't look like it. Thank you, Rob.
Jared? All right, moving along to goal four. If you recall, we we positioned these goals intentionally. You know, that well-run city organization is the foundation to, assist our community and move the community forward. How we engage and connect with them ensures them they know why we're doing what and what we're doing. And then that infrastructure is the is the bedrock to our community being able to safely, you know, get where they need to be. Then we can start building on that strong sense of place and those objectives of livability, recreation, destinations and education. We have some future work going on and conversations with you all related to workforce housing that steering committee continues to meet to recommend policy strategy. We did complete the study last year. And then we have a new Parks and Rec Director who's not busy at all. His name's Aaron. He's over here. Aaron, since you're new, just so you know, we usually have each department talk for about 45 minutes to an hour. So you go ahead on your action items.
Deal. I'll take all that time. So the Move MHK Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan, it's one of the things that I was asked to complete when I first got here. We are right in the middle of that. We'll be doing interviews for the two finalists on Friday and then be we'll bring a recommendation for a firm to you. That plan's going to look at consolidating all the background information that we have. We have several park master plans out there, some strategic plans. So this is going to look at everything that's been completed, including the aquatics piece that's under 4.6 and consolidate that into a 10-year plan. So it'll look at financial strategies, what we're doing as a program. It'll benchmark us against other communities. And it'll consolidate all our plans to hopefully put together a strategic plan over the next five and 10 years and perhaps even longer as we move forward to grow Parks and Recreation in Manhattan. And I'll happily answer any questions about that.
Thank you.
Action 4.7, pursue attractive, unique community offerings. We got a lot in the queue that we're working on. Seco Park Design and renovations there. Stonehaven Park, you all adopted that donor-initiated public art. We have a lot of public facilities that have that have Greater Manhattan Community Foundation and other groups have utilized that policy. But then, of course, you see around the community, the private ventures and investments that are happening in that arena as well. And then multiple updates and exhibits and fundraising for our Discovery Center and Zoo that are on the horizon as well. Aggieville and downtown, we talked about so much that it did get its own action item as well. Our community development department is going to be in front of you all and I believe in September, October to give you an update on the Beyond Tomorrow Downtown Plan. We also have an action item to look at that downtown mall plaza that we talked about in beginning to design that Aggieville is going to continue to progress. We should have some updates to you all soon. I know the the folks at Midtown too are looking to get in front of you all as well for some updates there. One thing we're also working on is a common consumption area ordinance. Downtown's wanting to, we have a memo for you and we'll give you an update with that, but really we're looking to shift away from the special event with alcohol permit, given some constraints with that state statute and shift to the common consumption area. But it'll look and feel the same really to the user so that downtown and Aggieville can continue to do some of those events with closing down the streets and having that kind of that open, open carry. So we'll be back in front of you in a couple of meetings too, specifically for the downtown Third Thursday event. Community Development is very busy with some some planning efforts. One of the the main ones that they're going to be working on and Stephanie is going to talk about is the East Manhattan Gateway Plan for US Highway 24. And we also are really wrapping up the last phase here in 2024 with the Edge North Campus Corridor District at Dennison and Kimball. Stephanie?
I don't have too much to share as far as East Manhattan Gateway goes. You guys are going to hear a lot about it for the next 18 months. But we have started to reengage with that US 24 Corridor Committee. We just had a meeting on Friday. KDOT is aware that we are pursuing some planning initiatives out in the Green Valley area. And they expect for a an update of that 2009 US 24 Corridor Study to come at the end of the East Manhattan Gateway Plan. I would say one of the things not really reflected here because it's not a project is just recognizing the development review process that goes through community development. And we continue to look for ways to make that more efficient to hear what the developer's feedback is on those those processes and to make refinements as we need to.
Any questions for Stephanie? Thank you.
All right, then goal find a strong, goal five, a strong and diversified local economy, looking to support our our local businesses, attract and entertain new businesses to bring more individuals and families into the area and continuing community investment to assist with some of those economic efforts. You all had a good work session with the Chamber of Commerce a few weeks ago. They talked about the establishment of that Elevate Fund and a lot of the work they're doing. We're going to be back in front of you too with an update here shortly regarding the base grant award that we got for the Entrepreneur Innovation Center. That would occupy the first floor of the Aggieville Garage along North Manhattan Avenue. So we'll be looking to give you an update there and then working with the state so we can officially accept that grant award and start working towards construction. A lot of efforts at the chamber mentioned too, related to just attracting new businesses in the community. A lot in the queue with the foundation building, the potential for Midtown. We just had our first, you all approved the first speculative industrial building IRB with that program, which should help as well. We did have, you know, an action item related to evaluation of our ED incentives, the tools that we use to facilitate the growth in the community. We we have that 2023 sales tax, economic development sales tax that has a portion for ED. We haven't necessarily looked at those tools. If you recall, we were going to engage with Baker Tilly to maybe analyze those, but we kind of shelf that. So as the commission is willing, we can, and the chamber, we can maybe look to to do those things in the future. Shifting now kind of away from the strategic plan into the general fund, we provided you a lot of information in your packet as it relates to the 2024 budget. Things we've talked about, you know, we're at around 50 mils. So that was a mill that'd be decreased based on your guidance at previous budget meetings. Some of the major impacts and shifts when you're looking at those documents are some things that we talked about. Animal Services and Building Services moving from Parks and Rec into the City Manager's Office. The increased consolidative funds from other departments into the IT fund, which, you know, shows that IT department budget growing quite a bit. We have COLA and Merit within there as well as the union contract increase. We did provide you a handful of new positions that departments are looking to pursue. Parks and Recreation has also done some just division restructuring. So while the budget is fairly the same, you did see some shifts in some of those budgets that are increasing and decreasing. And then I mentioned earlier, the general fund transfer to the CIP. So all told, looking at a $45 million general fund budget for 2024. We can pull up any of the documents that we provided you all if you want us to refer to any of those. And departments are still here, happy to discuss any specifics related to their budgets.
So there is there a simple explanation for the fact that our budget is now 50% bigger than it was three years ago? From 29 million to 45 million, is there? Someone looks at that and they go, wow, that's a lot. What what is there something is is that include like federal ARPA money or something? Obviously, that's a one-time deal and we're can keep keep going up. Or is it all sales tax money? Is it all? What what are the top three factors that are? Where's the money coming from to come up with an extra 16 million compared to three years ago? Or what's what's this? Is there a simple?
15% this this year.
Yeah. So what the? Yeah, what what can we what can we tell people? Yeah, so what, yeah, what, what can he, what can we tell people when they go, wow? So what, over the last few years, what, what are the big things that people are getting now that they weren't getting in two thousand and twenty-one?
The main distinction I would draw your attention to, the twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two's are actuals. The budgets in those years were larger, much larger than those actuals. Those were years where we were obviously watching revenue streams and adjusting our operations. Budgeted numbers jump. I think twenty twenty-two budget is actually thirty-four million. We actually spent thirty-one, or we actually documented thirty-one million dollars worth of expenses and revenues. Twenty twenty-three, now you, now you've jumped into a budgeting number.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-four, obviously, again, a budgeted number.
You don't think we'll spend all thirty-nine, three, forty-four?
Well, that's the twenty, no, we won't.
This year?
Well, this is what we've talked about before. We're building budgets on budgets. We build, we stack extra cost and costs we never had on a consistent basis because we never use projection. We always use budget.
Yeah, so it, we, since I've started at this city, it's been this way. It's, it, it is a historical approach in terms of budgeting. The revenue side of it does factor in. So when you do have an increase in sales tax or you have inflation, you, in state of Kansas, we have to have a balanced budget. So we have to reflect these revenues as expenses, whether there is reserves, unexpended budgets, whatever the line item may be. So to, to sit there and say it's, it's, you know, swelling by that and we're actually spending that money is inaccurate. We've also went through a period of time here where our, our cash balances were very, very low. And in order to gain momentum in your cash balances, your budgets have to grow. So when we have savings and we have inflation and we realize more in sales tax, doesn't mean we're spending that money. You've watched our cash balance grow from one point seven million dollars in twenty fifteen to roughly sixteen million dollars today. That alone will raise your budget by fifteen million dollars. So there's a variety of factors. Now, you get into operational budgets, you can see our, our personnel line items very similar here. We have a hard time and have had a hard time in the last few years actually operating at full budget capacity. It's just been that difficult to hire, recruit, and retain individuals. You can hop into anybody's budget and all those detailed budget sheets and just look at personnel. We have underspent significantly. It doesn't mean we're not hiring the individuals. It means we're hiring the individuals, they're leaving, we're trying to hire again, they're leaving. You just don't realize the full capacity of your personnel budget. This year, contractual services and commodities, both seven to eight percent increases due to inflation and what it's costing us to do business throughout the entire community. That's no different than anybody else. Everyone's experiencing that. And it's part of the reason, you know, we're looking at a six percent inflationary cost that we've talked to you all about personnel and, and steps and COLAs, which I know you, you've all had a lot of conversations with, not only around us, but around other entities. So you're, you're very well aware of that. We're also increasing vehicle replacement funds. It's a huge increase in the last two years. Actually putting that in our operating budgets versus just in capital improvements has, it's caused our budgets to increase. Saving up for that over a ten-year period and dedicating that revenue stream has increased this budget quite a bit and increased last year's budget quite a bit. So the IT move is a big one this year. We have a breakdown on page, I think, five, six, or seven of that attachment that gives you all the detailed sheets. There's a two-page breakdown, which we'll, we'll pull up if you want to jump into that. That two pages really describes to you the difference between where we were in twenty-three and what we're proposing for twenty-four. It's a very good two-page summary. It gives you a balance of all the different, I think it's the one right before that, Jared. Yeah, that's where it starts. It's per department, talking about the increases in personnel and the ops and the difference between last year. And you can see, as we move through those, a lot of it is reflective of our people, but a lot of it is also an inflationary cost. We always watch revenues, and in the general fund, that forty-five million dollars is supported by roughly six mils. A mil's worth about seven hundred thousand dollars, that's four point two million dollars. Forty-five million dollars, four million of the forty-five is coming from property taxes. We've highlighted in the past, you know, you have a fire budget of about nine million dollars. You're not coming off that. I mean, that safety is, is going to be a very, very high priority. Our Mill Levy Covey covers roughly half of the fire department. The rest of the expenses are all a matter of us watching revenues and us tracking how these things are coming in over the years. It's how we've been able to save in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and in twenty twenty-three. It's a part of the reason we have a cash balance. There's obviously federal money coming in, and we've told you, you know, we've shown you the ten million that we've recovered in ARPA, and we've injected it into our general fund. And it has helped, and it is going to help. But the increase in our budget is always a, it's, it's a gulp, and it usually is. But it's not all about just expending dollars. It's about accounting for the revenues that'll come in as well.
That's a very good explanation. Thank you. Any other questions about this stuff?
I just think when you look at the staffing, because I see you've got on there new positions, but yet we can't even fill the old positions. We're talking about new positions. And I've, it seems to go in phases, like keep getting more of this feedback and feedback of being very difficult to hi, to, to hire and not getting those next interviews done and losing people because we don't contact them. And I think we need to be strategic instead of trying to hire fifty people, hire twenty people and make sure we get them hired.
Yeah, we have a lot of those conversations internally, Commissioner. And, you know, departments are here tonight, if you really want to jump into some of these. There's some new facilities, there's some new initiatives that we're, you know, our marketing specialists, I'm sure almost all our department heads could talk to you about how much more marketing they want to do. And our, you know, one of the main reasons, to me, you know, our animal shelter, we're trying to privatize because we cannot go out and do what a private group can do by way of marketing and fundraising. We are limited. We cannot just kick Brandon, you know, three, four hundred thousand dollar marketing budget to go out and promote the airport. We'd like to. It probably makes sense to do it because you'd probably get a return into, on that investment. But we are the government, we are built in a way that we incrementally grow or we incrementally shrink. But when you get into budgets and, and you start looking at people and, and the effect of how programmatically we, successful we've been and getting the word out and getting the return on that investment by way of marketing and, and promotion, we, we struggle. It, it's a tough area for the government to really crank up like a, a private group can. And that's one of the big reasons, I think, Prairie Plaza is going to have success in Manhattan. I think they'll generate a tremendous amount of funding, funding that we would have struggled to bureaucratically administer.
Well, I think that one in particular, because there's a certain soft spot for animals and how you can get that done. I wonder if we shouldn't maybe look at maybe a private solution to some of our marketing from a contract basis in order to get some of that, you know, hiring done. Because like I said, I'd rather have, instead of being short fifty, be short thirty, and maybe we don't have the others for a while.
Yeah, and some of your, your advice you've given us on Aggieville, we've done just that. We've looked to Middle, they're developing a product. I'm very excited to get that back in front of you. Jared and Andrew, our PIO, have done an excellent job integrating their knowledge, their expertise with Middle, who is a private contractor. They're very excited, and they've, they've admittedly learned a lot about what we do and how we do it to try to relay it then to the public. You know, we are information overload. We have more pages and more information, reams and reams of information just in the action items you will, you all take in a given year. Getting with a private group, they are trying to distill it down to what are the key pieces of information we can get to the public? And they do have a different approach than we do. We, we dump it all in because it's all there. They will distill it and know, and, and have a better reach in terms of the information people want and what they will look at versus everything we put out there.
I think the other thing that we're doing that, that you don't really see is that we're using the funds that are in those vacancies that we can't fill in tough positions, engineering a big one. And we're working, what you'll see when I go over the planning chart, we're going to expand the on-call, going to recommend we expand the on-call, bring more private sector folks onboard to help us with this. And that's, that's something we're, we're trying to do, and those are hard to find as well.
Yeah, no, and I think you're going to need to do it. Obviously, you could say that we might pay a premium, but we have to get the job done. But I think maybe just even on the, on the hiring front and on the HR front, you know, maybe there's some private help that you can get to do that recruiting and, and speed up some of those processes.
And we have been doing that with especially positions that have been difficult. We've, we've used outside firms that have helped us in that recruitment effort. Some with success, some maybe not. We found Aaron that way.
All right.
It's a really good page that breaks down your, your significant impacts to the general fund, personnel, ops, and then the new positions. Just briefly looking through the positions, a lot of them have to do with the joint maintenance facility ERP. I know Rob's trying to get the street division built back to a point where we're, we're fixing more potholes, we're out there addressing the things that the public's telling us they want addressed.
Particularly on Anderson.
Yes, yes. And I think they've got a strategy on Anderson.
I've got a strategy.
Well, whoever did the grinding there in front of Lee School did a fabulous job. That, that has stopped jarring my teeth on their, there's three or four places. It's like, I just knew it was going to, the grinding was perfect. So keep that up.
Yeah, Brian, Brian took advantage of that grinder being in town. He knew if we brought him just for our city projects, it was going to be very expensive. He waited for another entity to also need the grinder, so we capitalized on that while they were here. But we did the grinding on North Manhattan, we did it on Kimball, too, and it helped, helped tremendously.
Yeah, the mobilization, just to mobilize, I think was either thirty or forty thousand dollars. So we tried to combine a number of different locations throughout the city so that there was only one mobilization.
We have some offsetting revenue positions, the education specialist at the Discovery Center. We do think that could be an anticipated increased revenue stream by that activity. Brandon's got some airport security and ops tech he needs to meet those federal requirements. So, I mean, we, we've sifted through this. Management's probably whittled this down quite a bit to eight. It's the eight that we feel like are, they have some legitimacy to them. It doesn't mean we have to hire all of them, but there's some legitimacy to, to the arguments that, that department heads have brought to us for these positions. When you look at ops, the IT that we talked about, Parks and Rec's in the room, they want to talk about some of the, the camps that they like to do, they're expanding those offerings. The transfers to the CIP, that's just a, a normal, well, I think it's mainly in ARPA, is it not? Is that a reflection of that one point two-five million transfer to the CIP, increasing the budget? But yeah, it's bringing money in that we didn't have in the general fund or in the CIP yet. But this is a good sheet to give you a really good feel for where we're at on, from a budgeting front from twenty-three to twenty-four. Happy to dive into any of these details or get into those budget sheets with department heads if you'd like.
I don't think that's necessary. All right, any other, is that, you got more presentations to go? In that case, we better start asking questions because otherwise we'll be done.
I would just offer that we did provide the detailed pages on the general fund. We also provided the revenue year-to-date through June, so half the year. And so you can kind of see where some of those aspects are. That's a lot of, but just shows you all of those different revenue sources that we have. We didn't have a, a summary page for it, but we're working on that. And so, yeah, there's, there's just a lot there, so I encourage you to, to go through it. If you have questions along the way, please ask those. Well, the other thing you'll see a lot of is, especially in Parks and Rec, we, we've made, we've moved a lot of stuff around. So some of those, if you say, well, that's a huge percentage increase, well, it took what was maybe combined, Rec Administration's probably the classic where all of the permanent employees were in the, in the Rec Division, and they've been filtered out into new division and budgets. So athletics, youth athletics. What else, Aaron? You want to point out there?
So, yeah, that, that's kind of our, as we're changing a philosophy going forward, you guys dealt with this sometime last year when you adopted the cost recovery policy. This is the next iteration of that, is to form these kind of divisions that are these umbrellas and really hone in on the costs, both the revenue and the cost in those cost centers, looking at, say, athletics as a whole or aquatics. And aquatics, we're using loosely, it's anything with water, so like the, the ice is in there as well. But tho, those employees need to be reflected in those areas to get a true determination of what that cost recovery is. The, also, the next iteration of that is, right now, what you're seeing on cost recovery is primarily operational costs for recreation, and this will be called out the master plan to do this, but it'll be all the indirect costs. So we're working on structuring this in a way so we can look at a holistic cost recovery for the entire department, all divisions.
You know, page sixty-three and sixty through sixty-six are Anthony and Eisenhower Rec Centers where we have increased expenses. We're almost up to four hundred thousand now and not a lot of revenue. I mean, we're doing specialty rent revenue and it's, it's pretty good, but there's, and we have our programs in there, but there's not a, a lot of those program revenues are just offsetting the cost of the program. The, the cost to run the facility is significant. So as Aaron goes through his, his master planning process, that, that I'm going to encourage him to talk about how we recover some of those increasing costs for utilities as an example. You know, there are new facilities, not a lot breaking down, but we've got a lot of coverage by custodial staff in those facilities that keep it open. So compared to what was originally sold as an after-school weekend program to being every-day long hours. So those are, those are some high costs with not a lot of return.
Yeah, I think we're.
But a lot of quality line.
There you go. Well, I think that's the thing, we're, we're going to have to raise the rates, but then hopefully either the GMCF or the Parks and Rec Foundation will be able to kick in money for the, the people that can't afford the program so that everybody can keep doing them, but without necessarily them, the, the less fortunate, poorer people, quote-unquote, that may need, we don't want to leave people behind, but there ought to be a way that we can, yeah, make the programs work. And if we can get the foundation and/or the GMCF to help fill in that scholarship gap, then we may maybe get this thing a lot closer to, yeah, cash flowing, so to speak. Go ahead.
Yeah, so again, this, so the financial piece will be part of the analysis of the master plan, and whatever's not covered in there, we'll be doing, working internally as staff to, to develop proposals that you could choose from. Just to your point, there will always be an avenue, whether it's through the foundation or some other means, for people that can't afford to participate, we will make sure there's an avenue that they can participate. That's, that's something that I'm pretty passionate about, and I'll make sure that happens.
All right, so what else you have questions about? Anybody, anything?
I just draw your attention to the, the Mill Levy breakdown. We're still sitting at that fifty point four, seven mils. This is where we landed when we did the, the revenue neutral rate. If there's further discussion or clarification, we can provide you here. We'll have another opportunity come August to, to talk about this a little, or September to talk about this a little bit more. We'll do utilities here towards the end of the month, come back. We'll be looking for direction and guidance at that work session here in a couple of weeks on where we need to publish. And then obviously, we'll have our hearings. We'll not only have a hearing on what we publish for the budget, we'll have a hearing on that revenue neutral rate and just see where you all want to end up from a, from a. and just see where you all want to end up from a, from a mill levy standpoint. We've dipped below seventeen mills, we're now at sixteen point six for the city government managed functions. You have thirty-three mills there that combine PD and the library.
Now that we're halfway through the year, will you also be giving us information about all of the sales taxes that have come in and how that's being spent, like you have the general fund here?
It's part of the general fund, there, it's, you know, there's transfers that are part of the general fund overall revenue picture. We have put those in your forecast sheets that are in the general fund.
Well, then maybe I mean the revenue that comes in through property taxes and versus the revenue that comes in through sales taxes.
Yep, it's, it is part of this packet.
Okay. I couldn't, Jason, get there.
In terms of collections to date?
No, just your forecasted revenue streams that we have. Did we include that in these sheets for the general fund?
No.
Okay, we can get those to you.
Yeah, okay.
There are, there are general revenue, oh, I don't.
Because this only seems like part of the picture with the grants we have and the, and the sales taxes too.
Yeah, there's a.
If, general fund.
So the monthly report also that comes in, the City Management Monthly Report, has that finance overview that's that year-to-date revenues and expenses. Big picture, both breaks out the general fund as well as all funds. So that's, that's a handy document that should have too.
The prior commission memos also referenced, we had a revenue work session earlier, kind of gave you some forecast information on where we were going to be, property tax, sales tax, franchise fees. Those factor into our balanced budget approach in the general fund. We have been realizing continued increase in sales tax compared to what we budgeted. We did ask finance staff to increase our forecasted sales tax. I believe we increased it by a million dollars in order to more accurately reflect what we've been receiving. We make that adjustment, we're not going to be as excited every month next, next year. We're more like, we're going to probably be really close to what we budgeted. So the last couple of years, we've been conservative in order to not overextend ourselves with our budgeting process. We watch those revenues come in, it's added to our cash balance as well. The last couple of years, it's been good to see those funds bolstered in the cash balance and what we're carrying forward. But we're getting to the point now, and I've made this comment to you previously, you know, that the money that we're leaving, quote unquote, you know, on the table is more about balancing that cash balance. That is the barometer for your general fund. And with it around fifteen, sixteen million dollars right now, it's up and above where you would CGFOA recommend. You need three months, and at forty-five million, three months, you know, it's going to be right around that ten to twelve million dollar number. So we're hanging in there, we like it a lot better than being at one point seven, but it is the barometer that we continue to come back to from.
Well, our sales tax continues to overproduce, which is a good, good thing.
Yep.
But it, it's not what we necessarily built in. And I'm so pleased that the compensating use tax has overproduced, as far as I'm concerned, also for the last year and a half or two years. So that has really given us a buffer, I think.
Yeah, and turning back this one point one six eight million by reducing that mill levy and not keeping it flat, you know, cuts into just that overall financial picture moving forward. But again, keep an eye on the cash balance, and that should really be the goal. And try not to burn off that five, six million dollar cushion all at once is also an admirable goal that we've talked about.
And so far, the state's reported slightly bigger sales tax for the next, since it takes us a while to get in, theirs numbers are still a little higher than they expected.
Yeah, I think that, and I think that's inflation. I mean, people, even if they're shopping the same, they're paying more for things, so that's generating more revenue. And I think we're seeing a good percentage of that as a result of that, and hopefully, hopefully that inflation will come down. I was shocked, you know, I think a week ago I paid a lot for, for gas, and then I went, that's a jump.
Just go out of town, it's twenty cents cheaper.
Okay, anything else, Jason? All right.
Yeah, I just want to make one comment, we're still getting lots of feedback, you know, about the, about the mill levy. People asking questions like, okay, what can you guys take out of the budget? Has the staff got any suggestions? I mean, because, you know, there's people just send me notes saying, well, you know, give me a list of things you can cut out of there.
You know, we used to have a lot of conversations about where in the general fund to make cuts, and I, you know, I don't think the tolerance for property taxes is ever going to increase. I think the intolerance for property tax is only going to increase. And some of you and I have had the conversation of where that seventeen mills goes and what it does. That seventeen mills is eleven million dollars. We have a two hundred million dollar budget. That eleven million dollars is the total property taxes the city receives on those seventeen mills. A one cent sales tax generates sixteen million dollars. Now, my answer is probably more of a, what would you prefer? I mean, what, what is more tolerated? Or we start talking about services that we've been providing and where do we want to cut? You know, the inflationary factor hits all of us everywhere. And when we bring back budgets that are double-digit increases, there's reasons, a lot of it has to do with just the general nature of inflation. You know, inflation plus one percent is, you know, a recommendation of where you want to keep something healthy and maintain the service at the level you have. But there, we get that pressure all the time in terms of what can we cut? I do think the Park and Rec Master Plan is very timely. You know, we went through a lot of internal cuts between 2015 and 2021, 2022. And we didn't really address a lot of the Park and Rec programs and facilities until 22. We also realized less people available for Park and Rec in 2022. It was a combination of things happening that really rocked the community and made some tough decisions internally. We have to be cognizant, though, if we start talking about cutting services, it ripples through every department. You can't just isolate it. You isolate it and you create an imbalance in what we do. And we're happy to talk with people about that, but I get back to alternative revenue streams more so than where do you want us to cut?
Well, and that's, that's what I was thinking, like, if sales taxes are going up, can't some of that be used to offset, you know, property tax?
If everything's held constant, I would, I would say, yeah, it could be. But what do we do with everything increasing at the rates that they are? I mean, property taxes are trying to mirror that. I mean, the inflation that's taking place in the natural setting of housing and commercial property is attempting to reflect what people are willing to pay for a product.
But of course, you know, with this assessment's going up like they did, I mean, I thought we did a good job here cutting a million dollars, you know, of revenue out of property tax, but, you know, the, the folks out there don't appreciate that because their taxes are still going up, even though we lowered the mill levy.
Yeah.
So, you know, they're, they're still sending us notes saying, you guys got to do something about fixing this. But I also agree, they don't want to see any services cut, though. So I'm not, I just don't have a good answer, you know, on where we're going to get those kind of dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, to make enough of it, I don't know if we could, we'd have to cut a couple million, three, a couple million bucks just for anybody to notice that the property tax went down a little bit, and that's going to devastate.
That two point seven million in valuation growth is just coming from houses and properties selling for more than what it did previously. The three hundred and, what is it, eighty? The three hundred and eighty thousand dollars is what's actually been built new in this town. That's the valuation growth. The other is, is an adjustment to the system. It's not anything we control.
Yeah, the solution to better property tax rates is more property being taxed instead of less property being taxed more. And so that's, I don't know, that's why we've got to get, yeah, big business, we got to get more people, we got to get more sales actually, got to get more.
Right. And then that meeting we talked about to see what's going on with commercial property versus residential. Because the way the numbers came out, we really didn't, it appears we really didn't get much on commercial.
Yeah, you've got, we gave you those previously, but you're looking at three billion in residential and five hundred and seventy million in commercial. I mean, and we've talked internally, and we've done this in the past, and we've really reached out to our partners at the Chamber. And I do think that's where we want to go on East 24. When we look at that McCall Triangle and we look at East 24, we're not going to be talking about residential. These are going to be commercial, retail, industrial, office type of opportunities which generate a lot more revenue than residential. And it is where the focus and the, really the emphasis is going. If there are other areas of our community in the Southwest, it's really the only other area we could look at going to by way of growing in that industry. But the East is clear to us that that's where the money and the studies need to follow to get a result like you just commented on there.
Where K-State needs to keep building more for-profit things north of Kimball, so.
That'll work too.
I think it's important also to talk about the formula for property taxes. And that is set by the state legislature, and it hasn't changed for years. And it just keeps, the valuation just keeps going up. They have the ability any given year to make an adjustment in that. And so it's not just all the Manhattan city's responsibility. We have to live, figure out where we fit in this formula also.
Yeah, I think at least do the revaluation every five years instead of every two years or something, and give us a few years for people to catch their breath at that property tax level before they're revalued, and now you got the next big hit. But, yeah, that's all state and stuff like that, so.
The cautionary word of sales tax too that I would just provide, and we experienced it. When it plateaus and dips, it puts one heck of a strain back on that mill levy. And in years past, we've been constrained on how much we could raise the mill levy, and yet we're so dependent on sales tax. And I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't remind you where our rating agencies are at with our mill levies, with our cash balances, because they see sales tax for exactly what it is. It's unpredictable and it's not sustainable. We have to have some assurance of revenues coming in to cover the basic services and the debt and the things that we have to pay for. That, those three bullets that they provide in every rating agency report are constantly reminding us of being stable. And the further we move away from property taxes and the more we move towards those other revenue streams, we become susceptible.
All right, there's nobody in the public who doesn't work for the city out there, it looks like, so I'm not going to bother with public comment. I think we will call the briefing session part, I mean, I'm sorry, the work session over and move on to the briefing session. Thank you all for your attendance, have a good night.
So I just asked staff to stick around in case they, you asked me some questions about items on the agenda, so, since they're here. Normally, they're not here, so I have to wing it. I'll try to keep it, keep it from doing that. But before we get into the planning chart, I don't really have very much. Just to reaffirm that for radio show, Commissioner Butler's got August, Commissioner Maude, you've got September.
Linda's got.
Linda's got, Commissioner Morris, you've got October, and probably the November seventh meeting? If K-Man comes with their normal candidates can't be on the show, I'm guessing.
Okay, thanks.
And then Mayor, you've got December.
Okay.
Okay? And then typically changeover, that'll be a little different this time, because we don't, we don't have an automatic mayor. We'll have to talk about that going forward.
Are you on August, September?
All right, so got a joint city-county meeting on August seventeenth, so you could have, actually, the Thursday, the tenth, the deadline for those items. I have communicated with the county, and they're, they're certainly willing to come talk about the appraisal process and just, you know, from that aspect of things that you asked me to look in and.
I just want to get, I mean, we hear the same thing pretty frequently. And I just want to get off into the margins a little bit where we can actually explore some possibilities instead of just feeling trapped by the status quo.
Sure, there's a Good Morning Manhattan program with Dr. Marshall Stewart, K-State Vice President and Chief of Staff. And then right now, we've just got the mayor attending that.
That's the seventeenth also.
Seventeenth, yes, uh-huh. And then intergovernmental is the twenty-eighth. Item's due by the twenty-second. You've all chimed in on the league meeting, and then it's at the same time as AUSA. So I think you all got communication from Christian at the, at the Chamber about AUSA, and they're looking for some feedback by August fifteenth of whether you're planning to go or not. I think, Mayor, you've indicated you're planning to go on that trip. I didn't know if any of the other commissioners are interested in going on that trip or not.
So we got the mayor and got coverage.
Okay.
That's one of my, one of my things always on the budget is, I always mention, we spend too much on travel, so I'm not one to want to spend money going to Washington DC.
All right.
Let me ask about the city commission meeting, the Tuesday of AUSA with Mark on. Will we have a meeting on the tenth?
That's a work session. What's it, is it on the list?
Yeah.
Right now, as we have is the PD update and the CVB quarterly report.
Okay, so we could, it's because it's a, because it's a work session, we could have one anyway. Okay, thanks, I just wanted to know. But I did see that there's no meeting coming up for August twenty-ninth.
It's fifth Tuesday.
Yeah, okay.
So we typically wouldn't. The other things that are out there, Stormont Vale Health Center ribbon cutting is the eighteenth of August at 10:00 AM. And I think the mayor's going to that one as well. Also, you should have received, kind of saved the date for September eleventh, Day of Remembrance, is actually, will be on Sunday, September tenth in the park, like it's been done in the past year. So they're looking for some RSVPs close to the end of the month. On the planning chart for next week, anticipating bringing the amendments back to the massage therapy ordinance to speak about the individual that's talked to you about marijuana charges.
That's on the nine-five one, not the next one.
Well, it's second reading on.
Oh, that's the second one.
Yeah, first, first reading, and so I don't, I missed. Get some feedback, it's, it's a pretty, it's not a huge change, but if you want it on the general, that might be some feedback as opposed to consent. You all seem to be supportive of that, I don't know. Okay. We do have the second reading of the parking lot at the high school. We've got an MOU, the MOU back on for the environmental reviews for the Housing Authority. So hopefully that's a, for that, so it'd be good to get it executed. And then we have a MOU for the Manhattan Parks and Recreation Foundation. So this is a division that the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation has formed within their ranks, and it's an understanding of how that would work. So obviously, that's something new, I don't know if you want that on consent or on general. It's pretty straightforward as far as works similar, but obviously, it's something that's been a high priority for the commission to pursue, so.
I'd like it, I would like it on the general agenda. I think it bears discussion, and I'd like to know that, you know, you'll be giving us the finer points, I'm sure.
Yep, okay. Did you get that, Aaron?
See you then.
We've got a selection committee recommendation for the Phase One Design-Build contract. We had six firms that applied, and we interviewed four, I think, three. Interviewed three for the Seaco Park improvements. Again, this is not just, this is a design-build teams that we interviewed. And so it's got the price points, there's a Phase One Design. And so it's got the price points. There's a Phase One Design Process. Then they come back with a Phase Two and a GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price for that. And so again, we feel good about that process. We've got the contracts fairly well done. The recommended firm doesn't really have any issues with it. So we're comfortable just bringing everything to you. There's not a lot of negotiation to be, so the contract would be part of the packet.
So at that point, we would, we would learn what you're negotiating, what you've negotiated. Okay.
Yep.
Like the tennis courts.
So a lot of times with the.
I don't know what's happening with the tennis courts. So I'll find out.
Yes, well, that's to be determined.
This is just selecting the team. Then they'll go into a design stage and that public input to that design.
Okay.
Should we have six? Should we have ten?
Okay, I just, I just.
There's no, yeah, it's not a construction contract. It's a design process.
What's the plan?
Design and then build.
Okay.
Okay. But we have all the team members already pre-selected.
Okay.
We've got a recommendation for professional services to start the redesign of the Mall Plaza. Remember, we get a portion of the CID, the improvement district proceeds down there. So we're, feel like we got enough built up that we can make that work. And then got some temporary note sale ratification. We've got first, on the general, we've got first reading of the amendment to make the previous, I guess it is now, the Stadium Place. Greenbrier PUD to allow short-term rentals. That was recommended by the planning board and staff. We also have the results of the community survey results that we moved due to some conflicts with our consultants. So happy to share those. Some of the Parks and Rec stuff did get shared with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board last night. I think we gave you that heads up and a copy of what Jared was presenting to them. So there's some, some of that information's already out there. Then we have a public hearing to vacate utility easement at the twelve hundred Centennial Drive. That's just below our apartment complex we've had so much problems with. And it's a pretty typical easement vacation. Nothing in the way and it's no utilities, so it's, it's a pretty.
What is the latest on Royal Towers?
Scott, what's the latest on Royal Towers?
Who's got the mic?
I knew. See, it's good that you stuck around.
Yeah. I was just talking to Risk Reduction this afternoon. And we've got an engineering plan on fixing it the way it is. Believe we've reviewed it. One of the things we're looking at is possibly doing a third-party inspection because of the type of fix that's required. Our staff won't have that expertise to make sure it's being done. So we're looking at how to have them hire an engineer, a separate engineer to inspect it as it's being done. And there's also some discussion about another group that may look to purchase the property. So there's two avenues that they're, they're looking at right now.
And then the clock starts all over again, right? I mean, we don't have to wait a year for the, all the mechanizations to.
As far as.
Fixing it, getting it.
As long as it's not, as it's maintained.
As long as nobody lives there.
Yeah, if it's empty and it's, I mean, it can stay empty as long as it's maintained, you know, as long as it doesn't become a harboring for nuisance or that thing.
And it is, it's fenced, yeah.
It is fenced. We are getting on them for, there's quite a few weeds that need to be trimmed at this point. But that's what I have for right now.
That would be good.
Thanks, Scott.
Let me ask you, Ron, one quick question about the Mall Plaza. It's been maybe two years since we passed the CID. And with what was the mall going to accomplish internally with regard to improvements? Maybe we could have an update sometime on that, just to, so that we are more current about what, what's happening.
Okay, we can probably incorporate.
Wouldn't take long, I doubt, but just generally, I'm curious.
They've sunk a lot of money into the mall with their own money and are gradually getting reimbursed by the CID, so.
But we don't know that, so, okay.
All right, on the fifth then of September, we have a proposed first reading of amending the Solheim Apartments or Condos at Grand Mir. Again, they have a PUD and they wanting to go out to be considered for short-term rentals as well. That one has not gone to the planning board yet. It goes the twenty-fourth. There was no public opposition to the other one. And so I don't know whether, you know, that's, whether, you know, these things all depend on who shows up at the commission meeting as to whether or not we would keep that on the general agenda or the consent agenda. So we can address that next time. The second readings there and then we have a final plat, as Scott mentioned in his presentation, on the Living Word Edition for the Fire Training Center. We also have a FEMA grant for the nine-twenty-five Village Drive. We also got word, I think I sent that to you, that we did get the grant for the.
Gardenway.
Gardenway, thank you.
You did.
We also are, something I mentioned in the budget discussion, we're looking to put out a request for qualifications for on-call services. We're wanting, right now we have four categories. We're wanting to go to nine categories of consulting firms to help us with this. That's how shorthanded we are. So more to come on that one. But that's something we, again, we're just at this point seeing if there's any interest out there or availability of folks to do that. But then if that's something that would really help us out with all our projects going out and some substantial vacancies in that particular area. Plan to bring the agreement back for the professional services for the Manhattan East Gateway Program. And then talk about the, authorize the process for a community advisory committee and just how that sequence of events is anticipated to occur and the public involvement and all of that. So we'll have a recommendation on that. Bringing back an agreement on Sunset Avenue from Anderson to Platt Street for utilities and street work.
That's just the design?
Yes, yeah, just the design.
Just thirty percent. Study, study in thirty percent.
So no construction until late next year?
You had how many firms propose just that one team?
No, I thought there was three. I'd have to go back and look around, but.
We also are looking at the professional services agreement for Anderson Avenue from K-one-thirteen to Wreath. Rob, why don't you talk about that one?
Sure, that's.
Snuck that one in on me.
Yes, I did. I was added today. So this is Commissioner Motta's project, which is essentially Seth Child to Wreath. As we, staff is just overloaded. We need a set of traffic control plans. There's a number of businesses on the north side and I need some assistance to, we're going to use the on-call system to put together those set of plans. Hopefully bid it out after the new year and address that pavement condition between Wreath and Seth Child. So that's the intent. And I know Ron talked about the on-call system. You know, again, you know, Brian's spread, Brian and Ken Hayes are spread very thin. So some of those categories are project management, project inspection, MEP, which is mechanical, electrical and plumbing. Land survey and then also landscaping. So it's not just my department looking for those additional areas, those five areas we're talking about. There's some other departments that could benefit as well.
So that, that pavement project, is that going to be something you expect to last three, five, seven years? Knowing that KDOT may screw with Seth Child or something might happen with the car museum area. What's, what are you thinking?
So, so that's intended to be, so we had, we actually had a discussion with Ron and Jason before we were going to move forward with this. But the intent is to do a complete tear-down to the base, remove that concrete, replace it with asphalt in the current configuration, using sales tax dollars for street maintenance. Should the property on the south side redevelop, you know, some of the plans that were proposed involve the traffic signal at Walters. It also involves a bank missing. So there's, there's a lot of things that would have to happen before some of those improvements could happen. At the interchange, sure, there might be some pavement that might get repaired now. But there's nothing, I mean, there's nothing in KDOT's current outline. We continue to push the roundabouts and the construction of the roundabouts from a regional standpoint because of the fatalities up there at Seth Child and at K-thirteen at Dam Road, so.
It's, yeah, I'm almost to the point where it's like, stop building concrete roads because the things just don't seem to last worth a dang. Unless you put in twenty-seven inches of it out at the airport or something and you're forty years out of it. But it seems like, yeah, roads, just concrete just doesn't seem to be lasting with the joints going to crap in just a few years. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm becoming a bigger fan of asphalt every day, it seems like. They're easier to patch and fix, it seems like, than the concrete too.
And again, this would be similar to what we did on Kimball a number of years ago between Seth Child and College. So before we started the big college and Kimball intersection, if you remember, we tore that all the way down to the base and came back with asphalt. What this also allows us to do is that I will now have asphalt, if the project lets and is constructed next year. I will have asphalt from Connecticut basically almost all the way to Annenberg Park. So that makes it easier on future maintenance for mill and overlay, pavement markings and so forth.
Thank you.
Are we doing anything like KDOT is doing where they pour the concrete, let it cure for a couple of years and then overlay with asphalt?
We've tried to stay away from putting asphalt on tops of concrete, especially in urbanized areas. Because of the gutters, storm sewer system, putting asphalt on top of that concrete sometimes. And unfortunately, I've had that happen in my career that, that doesn't seem like an inch and a half is very much. But it'll kick water into somebody's driveway and into somebody's garage. So you have to be very careful with that technique.
I want to be sure that our concrete requirements and specifications, I know we've had some failures here when we were trying to do things I call it on the cheap. I don't know. But I want, I would just like to, you know, make sure that the quality of the concrete that we're using and the methods are, are designed to be durable. And so I just, I don't need a response, I just.
I would just say that since Rob and Brian came on the scene and they changed the design mix, the streets that they've used that new mix on and design have, are performing very, very well. It's the previous roads that are, where we're out on Browning in front of the school and places like that. Where that, the joint failure, and we're not the only one. If you've driven to other cities, there's lots of joint failure, including KDOT going on. So, but I feel pretty good about it. You can go some other places where we have some relatively new subdivisions that are asphalt that aren't bonding to the curb and gutters and our crews are constantly patching along those edges because the water wears that out. So there's, there's trade-offs. To me, the big advantage of the asphalt is on the busier streets. They're, they're easy to get in and get out and, and future to be able to do that. So I think their plan here is a good one.
Okay.
Thanks, Rob. Selection committee recommendations for the Zoo African Plains exhibit. Move forward with the Zoo Trust. All right, should be back for that. And then have a recommendation on the Park Master Plan. Move MHK coming that night. We've got a mower purchase on the agenda and then a resolution for Oktoberfest in the alley. Who's got that one? That's a new one that snuck on too.
I got it. It's a special event with alcohol that Manhattan Brewing Company is applying for. It's going to take place in the alley where Harry's used to be all the way to Fourth Street. And I think Flight, or that Aero Coffee is also extending their premise. So it's kind of like a, just a mini-event in the alley that they're doing. That's it.
And then we do have the first read on the common consumption area downtown that Jared was talking about. And then, of course, the big item is the public hearings on the budget that night. So pretty, pretty full agenda for things that way. Work sessions, as was stated, next week or two weeks from today, we'll have the utilities for water, wastewater and stormwater as well as some specifics on some of the design manual and the study for some of our watershed and tributary analysis that's been going on. So the consultants will present that, that night as well.
You know, something.
As well as the utility budget.
I'd be interested in, in this fee in lieu of discussion. I'd like to have like a five or ten-year kind of a chart that plots out the real fee versus what someone would pay in lieu, in lieu of paying their property taxes.
I'm not sure.
For development.
You have to be predictive as to what.
Well, we can use the last ten years or the last five and the next three or something to, to come up with a, some kind of a.
The fee in lieu of is the, is a fee so to not build the public infrastructure.
Right.
There isn't any tax change.
No, that's true.
So it's a, it's a, a different way. We're saying your particular area is positioned that it may not be that advantageous to detain on your site in a big pit. And we could use that money that you give us to do infrastructure improvements that'll help the whole system. So that's the, that's the provision.
But at some point, they stop paying and the rest of the community covers it.
I don't, I'm not tracking.
I'll have to talk to you.
Okay, all right.
It's also on the quality side as well. So instead of having these small, little rain gardens that may or may not get maintained, we're exploring options of perhaps more of a regional water quality component that they would pay into, that would help fund that construction. No different than what we did at the joint maintenance. We, we have a, you know, a water quality component at the joint maintenance that picks up a lot of the McCall area. It was easier to put it on the location that we did versus just downstream. But the amount of pollutants and contaminants that it's removing, you know, is, there's calculations that, that have been done and justify the size and so forth. So that's some of the discussion that'll happen on the twenty-second.
Okay.
And that, and that, it's a one-shot fee when they're first sort of get their building permit or that process of getting.
Both on the quantity, which you've already approved, and what we're going to be discussing on the twenty-second is the quality.
All right, what else?
And then not planning a meeting on that fifth Tuesday on the August twenty-ninth, as we indicated. Have planned to do an update for the Beyond Tomorrow Downtown Plan on the twelfth of September. And then things are open, but there's a lot of other things we're working to see what we bring in. So there's several things in the mix there that will likely be back in front of you. That's all I had, Mayor.
All right. Linda, you got stuff on your mind you want to share with us?
I attended the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting last night. And it, and one of the questions that our director was asked was about the availability of the recreation centers after school in the afternoon. And he said that they're open, you know, we, we close them to adults. And while the Boys and Girls Club had that, helped us out, I guess, is what I'd say. And so those are open to the public. Why don't you tell it?
Do we renew our deal with the Boys and Girls Club?
We're actually going to run our own program after school. This is a pilot program that we've partnered with on K-State where it actually teaches kids how to, they, they take a role. There'll be a coach, there'll be a participant. they, they take a role. There'll be a coach, there'll be a participant, there'll be scorekeeper. And it, it's meant to be like lesson planning after school. So we're going to run that in a section. Boys and Girls Club will have us as kind of one of their trips. They get to come over. But the idea this year was we would still have a court open to the public so the public could use it even in those after-school hours, which is different than last year. Last year was Boys and Girls Club had it, and we closed to the public for that time after school.
But the kid, the students will still have to kind of register or something. There's going to be a lot of control on them.
Yeah, so, so for our program, they'll have to register. Obviously, if they're with the Boys and Girls Club, that'll be just a group coming in to use, and we'll, we'll manage that how we normally would.
But the elevated walking track will be open.
All right.
And I, I learned we're going to have a presentation soon about the new community survey and what the results are for that. And Erin, why don't you visit just a second with the commissioners about your plan to meet the public twice a month or?
Yeah, so we, one of the things that's running alongside the comprehensive plan, and it was just a, a way for me to get out and engage directly. We've, it's called Parks and Wreckit and Discussions with the Director. And so twice a month, one kind of at a coffee hour and one kind of at a happy, happy hour, I will meet with up to ten people for small group discussions. So we're going to do that as long as there's interest in it. That's a way for me to engage with small groups. Now, we do, we are asking people to register for that. I do want to keep it to ten because I feel like if you start getting bigger than ten, it, it goes away from being a discussion, and it's more me talking at people. And that's, you know, I'm there to listen as much as I am to answer any questions that people may have. So that is a new program that's out there. We had our first one last Friday, had five attendees, and covered everything from pickleball, the trails, to youth and adult sports and many other things.
All right, very cool. What else you got, Linda?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, John, anything?
Well, just to say that the ninetieth anniversary of the zoo was just a spectacular event. And I want to compliment the Friends of the Zoo, the city, everyone who participated and contributed to that event because we do have a pretty special zoo here, and they have big plans for the future. And it'll take a long time, I think, to get a giraffe. So anyway, we have some new accommodations we'll have to build, but sounds like a good plan. That's all.
I was going to mention, I, you know, I talked last week about those, you know, mill levy charts. And we're going to be able to get those updated because, again, I think the difficulty of explaining the tax situation to people, if they can put their house value in there and see what it was last year, and then, and then say, okay, if I put it in there, if we hadn't lowered the mill levy, this would be my taxes. It went down to fifty, and, and I think the numbers might make a little bit more sense to people. So I'm still, I still encourage you to get that done if that's possible.
Yeah, we've had a couple of meetings on it. Finance and Jared and I have been taking some stabs at some worksheets. And we'll eventually have to talk with Civics Plus, I believe, to get that on our site, or can we do that? Yeah, I think what we have now is pretty informative. It'll just be adding to it in the years. Probably have to push people to Riley County GIS where they do show the last two years evaluation, so hopefully they can remember.
Well, if you can't do it three, you know, just, if we have the, the potential, we can put in different mill levies to see what it's going to be, and then we've got last year's, we can have the year before.
Yeah.
That'd be enough.
Okay.
And then people can see it, and, and instead of this, you know, the average price of a home and all that, you, you can, you can see what it's costing you specifically. And then that would be real helpful. But that's all I've got.
Ron, you got something else?
I, I, Katie reminded me. So on the first meeting in October, which isn't on here, we're planning to bring the standard traffic ordinance comes from the state, legislators come up with new things. And one of the things that's popped up, and we've ran it by the police department, is golf carts on city streets near golf courses. The legislature kind of eased those regulations and kind of left it up to individual cities to determine whether they want to allow it and where they want to allow it. And so right now, our ordinances restrict them. They're not, they're not supposed to be there. And the feedback we got from the police says they'd like to keep it that way. But I know you've had some inquiries.
There's one person from Grand Mary that's had an inquiry.
Okay, so anyway, right now, we're, if you want us to change.
He's got carts everywhere.
That'll take a little work, so that was why I brought it up.
After I get a golf cart, we'll bring it up again. All right, so anything else? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Can I move to adjourn the August eighth, twenty, twenty-three City Commission Work Session?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Please call to roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Hattasol?
Yes.
Motion passes.